Okay, let me tell this meeting more please. Everyone join us in the place of allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Flag of the United States of America. In the Republic of British States. One nation under God. It is law and justice.
Did I skip something?
Yep, you did.
Well, I didn't do it on purpose.
It's okay. Didn't I have a... A means that I was there and everybody else looking out there.
I can't say it was because I was on the phone and I'm dead. Okay. Let's, uh, we'll skip over that. I was looking at the clock and thinking at the same time. Let's prove the minutes of June 2nd, 2020 meeting, please. Mr. Baker.
Second.
Ms. Smith. Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments. Do we have someone sign in tonight, Suzy?
Yes, sir.
Who was that, please?
John Don.
John Don You. What's his topic?
I think I just wrote down gratitude.
Gratitude.
Mr. Don You.
This is my final, definitely my final school board meeting, but it's my, probably my final meeting of local government. And I just want to thank all of you. President, Presley, Superintendent, Superintendent Kelly, and everyone who came before you, all of you here this evening. You've all been kind to me. You've answered my questions. You've been indulgent. And you've shown me behind the curtain when it was appropriate. And I greatly appreciate of that. I was recalling this morning as I was driving around delivering papers that some of my happiest moments were in this building. This reasonably nondescript building. I mean, it's nothing spectacular. I think we can all agree on that. But, you know, it's not just the school board meetings where a lot of key decisions are made. People don't realize that, but a lot of key decisions are made here. But beyond meetings, it's the Stelling Bee every January, my absolute favorite event for the last 15 years. The Math Field Day, the award ceremonies. And then preschool. I was thinking back. Zara had her first, this is where she started school, when she was obviously in preschool, back in 2009. And I remember coming in that back door every morning. And for about six weeks, I couldn't leave you until about half an hour was gone. In fact, we were starting to draw pumpkins. And I still had that pumpkin drawing before tears would stop. That was just me. She was fine. But I've had, I've had great 15 years of learning so much. There's no greater way for an immigrant to learn about, you know, a country, a state, a region, a county, a town, its people, its culture, its young people than to be its only full-time reporter. And it's been, it's been an absolute honor and a pleasure. And I just want to thank everyone of you. You Superintendent Minkett, Superintendent Lucas, Superintendent Roach, Superintendent Polly briefly, Superintendent Roach again, Superintendent Seaver, and very talented Mr. Brazil. And of course, all board members. U5. Gary McAllister. Donna Martin. Billy Robbaker. Phoebe Harless, Thomas Ramey. And David Fry. That's all the board members that I reported on my time here. Everyone was just so kind and welcoming and trusting. And you showed me the trust and the kindness and the love that I hope I shall follow. Okay, so that's just my word of thanks. Zara's going to talk to you about distance learning. Mrs. Ice assigned them an essay. It was one of the final topics before, before the summer break. Just an essay about distance learning. And I think there was a few reading materials suggested, which I'm not sure you went to. The enthusiasm, kind of, as I think you all can see, the enthusiasm of all the packages and everything kind of waned as we got closer to the formal end of school year. But Zara ended up writing this essay really completely from, from the heart. Right? And there's, there's no, there's no references and nothing cited. It's just, it's just her thoughts about distance learning. And I thought it was very pragmatic. It was very practical and very sensible that our kids will do what they're asked to do with the resources they're given. And even though, you know, we mightn't all have had laptops these past two months, we mightn't all have had consistency. You know, some schools were doing X and others were doing Y. Just whatever the kids were doing most, they were, they were being sensible about. And she just has two or three paragraphs she's going to read to you. Do you want to stand here? Yeah, you will.
Okay. Zara Don You.
Yeah.
Address the board.
I'll take a picture of you for the paper. Hold on that.
Can I read this?
Yeah. Yeah, please.
Good evening, board members, super attendants. Distance learning, which was once an option, has now turned into a necessity. People around the world went from going to school every day, having Zoom calls for classes and having packets to do. And long-distance learning has been good for some students and has improved some people's work. Some students have seen distance learning as their downfall. And they're not thriving as well as how they might have been in school. Even though a lot of people see distance learning in different ways, there are still ways to thrive while we are having to learn at home. Some ways might be go to bed at a regular hour. So then you would, you would be able to wake up nice and early and have plenty of time to work on your homework. If, if you have packets, you could try to get ahead on, I'd get ahead on it and do more work than what the paper says. So then you won't be behind in the future. If you have online work, you could try what people, what packets could do and do more work than what it says. That way you could get your work in as soon as possible. These tips are helpful for getting your work in on time. But what, but what could you do to help you nicely? You could start off by eating regular meals. So then you have the nutrients to help your brain focus. You could also, as I said before, go to bed every single time. I know it's tempting to stay up and watch Netflix. But if you stay up too late, at least one night, your whole schedule is messed up. You would, you would never be nocturnal. You would, you would never get the exercise, eat properly, or socialize with your family, et cetera. Quarantine is the best time to work on mental health. Some people, when at regular school, go through anxiety, stress, depression, all being because regular, regular day-to-day school might be a little, a little stressful to some people. But quarantine is the perfect opportunity to collect your thoughts, get into a healthy mental state, and relieve yourself. Although distance learning may be a challenge, it is still helping a lot of students from around the world physically and mentally. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys, lady.
Both Sean and Zara Don You for your comments this evening. We appreciate them.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time you took. Okay, let's go to our presentation reports. We have Angie Erving, our technology director. She's going to discuss one-to-one technology use policy. The policy. And everyone's part of their attachments that policy would be included with. Is any of this?
I think it is, yeah. It should be. There were a couple of corrections. Since that initial copy I gave Mr. Minkett, it could be there are just a couple of words that are changed. We had a group of teachers countywide who are on a technology advisory committee and administrators. I gave them this policy too for their input. So once they gave me input, I changed just a couple of things. This basically is a general policy for students to be able to take devices home for work in a one-to-one setting. I've made it general. I took some policies from other counties and adapted that to fit what we're doing. Some counties do lots of different devices. But we're going to kind of have a model of laptops and iPads as well. I think Mr. Minkett's going to speak a little bit about that later. But this list outlines our acceptable use policy for student use of the Internet is always in place, even if the student has a device at home. And if you see expectations there there's to have a charge when they do bring it to school. So if we are working in a regular setting back to school, it's the student's responsibility to bring that charge if they do take it home. Parents sign on the back to indicating they read, have read and understand this policy. And it's a checkout type of agreement. Students would return the device at the end of the school year for updates. And we'll have a policy, we'll have a procedure document with all those details because it's going to vary depending on the device, what the procedures are. Do you have any questions about the policy or?
I'm assuming each device is identifiable.
Yes. We, if, we are going to be managing these with mobile device management software. We're looking at a couple of different options right now. We can remotely deploy apps and software to those devices. All the traffic will be going through the state internet filter. So we would still have our students, you know, behind that filter. We can still run reports and see all the activity online from that device. There are a couple of different mobile device management options for the Apple iPads. And then there are Windows devices. We're looking at Microsoft Intune. The State Department's helping us with that. So we're hoping to be able to manage it all in that platform with Intune.
Okay, you just mentioned iPads and laptops. Are we adding a mixture of those or who's getting one?
What, do you want me to get into that?
Go ahead, and this is good news. I mean, we.
Yeah. We just got our funding application for the ESSERF fund, which is the CARES Act. With that, we can, Apple has special pricing now with Apple Care for two years also in a case. And there's room in the budget for us to do all the way down to kindergarten, one-to-one.
With iPads or laptops?
iPads, a mixture. Laptops for secondary, iPads for K5.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking at. With the tech advisory committee, I met with them today over Teams and got some input from them. I have a survey out there for them to tell me what they think works best for the different grade levels. And so from that, grades three through five, we're going to have an iPad with a keyboard. K2 will have an iPad with an OtterBox type of case. And then the secondary will be laptops.
You're not going to have a case on the iPads for three through five?
Yeah, it's the one with the keyboard. But it has a keyboard built in. So it's, it's the protective case with the keyboard too. It's kind of the portfolio-looking type of case.
Oh, okay.
And then the interesting thing, because I thought iPads for middle school with the keyboard, but from the technology advisory committee input, they prefer laptops. So we're looking back at that option. The laptops will be insured too. So that insurance is against theft, loss, damage. We do the repairs in-house, but the insurance will cover that device. With Apple Care, the added advantage there is we have a 1-800 number that families could call for support 24 hours a day with iPad. So I felt like that's a really good selling point if the devices are at home and they need help with those. Also, they can track them. They are supported for two years with this purchase. And then we can extend Apple Care beyond that and budget for it.
And the Apple Care will take care of maintenance and those things on the iPads?
Yes. And even two break fixes, accidental drops per year per device. Very good coverage. Do you have any other questions?
Do we have any idea when you might be delivering?
Well, no. We, we have to submit our budget, get it approved, and then get the funding, you know, set up. Then do our order. With the being, Apple, usually Apple is very efficient on their shipment turnaround. But, you know, so many districts are doing this. I'm afraid to even project what that's like. Because I had some laptops I ordered in April that I still have. So I don't know, and those are Lenovo, which is what the laptops are we're going to get. So I'm not sure on the turnaround time.
So the laptops are not MacBooks?
No.
They're either.
They're Windows devices. And the reason why we're looking at that is because the learning curve for teachers and students, MacBooks are quite different in navigating and the way the programs work. So with them, given the quick implementation, we felt like Windows devices would be best. The, let's see. The shipping, what, what I'm hoping if we can get them in this summer, we have some help from Energy Express employees where they have hours. They are helping us with food service, but they can also help us with putting cases on iPads, assembling all those things, helping us just move parts of cases as we receive them.
It's going to be a lot of work for IP, isn't it? Uploading all the files and programs and things to each device? Because we're talking, how many devices? Three thousand roughly?
Yeah, 25,000.
Just so this is on your radar, we're looking at hiring another TSS through this CARES Act. They help support what we're.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I don't know how you're going to do that on 3,000 devices. I mean, if you get them this summer, I don't know how you're going to get 3,000 devices ready to roll by mid-autumn.
Well, we would roll them out in phases. We'd start with high school. So those would be the laptops. Then we would go to middle school and then elementary. So, you know, it'll, it'll be a process. And then we have a grant application with education, that Education Alliance has assisted us with for a foundation for $100,000 grant. Part of that can provide an AmeriCorpsista worker to have a help desk. So I really, I think that is a huge benefit for students and parents to be able to call the help desk if they're having problems. Someone needs to, you know, questions and help put in work orders and forward that to, you know, to something in like tier one support, tier two support, that type of thing. So we'll see. I haven't heard on that grade.
I've heard they're distributed or not. Do you think that schools might have even sessions or something that would help educate parents on the operation of them or something?
Yes, I've, I've been thinking about videos, you know, providing like a YouTube channel or something for parents and students with how-to videos.
I can do it with my kids.
Right. So like with Mike McCormick's help and doing some videos like that just to frequently ask questions, you know, those kinds of things.
Angie, did you say these could be tracked if stolen?
Apple devices can be tracked. And then the Windows devices are insured. So with the Windows devices, that insurance covers theft, loss, damage, all that.
I would imagine, though, you can track through the IP address of that computer as well.
You can. It's not as built-in. But we can do things when we set them up to protect them from being just, you know, reimagined, wiped, that kind of thing. The iPads also, I'm going to have in grade, property in Lincoln County schools. So we do have some options for labeling on the laptops too. So that's something I'd like to affix, a label that, you know, is difficult to remove from those. Those devices are less than $200, the laptops are, so.
But what, they have very much memory?
Well, most things we do are cloud-based. They're, they're good on RAM and they don't have a huge hard drive. But most things we have are in the OneDrive, you know, in the cloud, internet-based, that kind of thing. So they've been able to handle everything that we've thrown at them. We have some of them out there for, with the distance learning grant too. Actually, we're going to be pulling that, that 500 that we have out there existing and repurposing those to get us going for the one-to-one. And then we can move machines around to cover that. So at least we have that 500 to start with prior to whatever we order from them.
Are those machines capable of upgrading the memory if need be? Because I can absolutely see someone that doesn't have good internet service at home.
Right.
Saying, okay, we don't have good internet service here. I can't access your cloud. But if I can download a copy of my children's textbooks onto the laptop.
Part of what we've discussed too is like a USB drive with content on it.
Yeah.
Mailing that.
A thumb drive. Those are relatively cheap to hold on, Diana. That might be the solution rather than more of a memory.
Because then that way we could have a couple of exchanges and send them back, things like that, so.
Well, it'll be a work in progress, but it's a very, it's in progress for sure.
It is. I, you know, it's, it's a heavy lift. It really is. But I think it's worth it. And I think the time is right to do that for our students. It's going to, it's a game changer for technology in our schools too because the funding that I would normally use on, let's say, refreshing desktop labs, you know, every student's going to have device. So moving forward, you know, it's a difference in funding plans and what we need and it varies per grade level. But I'm excited about this team of teachers too because I want that input from them at all levels to think through it and get their feedback, get their input. And all schools are represented on that, so it's going well.
Will the laptops have cameras?
They do.
So they could theoretically, on a snow day, they could have class?
Yes.
The teacher working from home remotely and the students on their laptops on their cameras as well?
The technology's infectious.
Good.
Any other questions, Bernie?
Thank you very much. Okay. That's a policy of one of our attachments here. So we'll go to the administrative section and we'll see that along with other things. Got a motion of those? Assembly. Mr. Baker?
Second.
Mr. Wilkerson. Mr. Minkett.
All right. I am in agreement with Applied Behavior Learning Center for by behavior assessment services, ADA interventions, and positive behavior supports. And train slash coach staff and intervention strategies for identified students according to the terms of the agreement, which is funded through special education. And this is the same agreement that we've had for a number of years. No, no changes. Item B, out-of-state travel for Seth Neal to Gatlinburg, Tennessee, July 25th through 28th, 2020, to attend crops training funded through CTV. We are only one of two CTV programs in the state of West Virginia with an invitation to participate in this opportunity. Figures only 80 school districts from across the country. Although it does say that the training is going to take place in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, I did receive an email from Seth indicating that it may happen virtually as a result of the COVID situation. So just know that he may not be traveling outstate. One of the dust settles. Item C, a policy for 30-day public review and comment. Policy available for review at our county website under information and announcements and public review. And that's policy Angie just covered with you, our one-to-one technology use policy. And we're out of.
Billings.
Yeah.
So about a month now. Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding the administrative items? Not, is that an all yes vote on those?
Yes.
Oh, yes? Oh, yes, on the administrative items. Go to the finance section, please. Motion?
I'll move.
Fred?
I'll second.
Rowley? Second. Jeff, you finance man too?
I'm the finance man.
You do it all, though.
Item A, scheduled invoices totaling $200,132.15, which is attached. Item B is Lincoln County Summer 2020 Payable Schedule. And item C, county pension for the following retired employee paid for excess levy fines.
Once had the opportunity to look at those invoices, I'm assuming that everybody's okay with those. Any other questions in finance section? Not, is that an all yes on the finance items?
Yes.
Oh, yes? Go to personnel, have a motion, please.
I'm going.
Carol?
Second.
Mary, second on that one. Mr. Minkett again.
Item A, employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, you may recognize that, you almost did. Employment of short, long-term substitute professional personnel pending FBI, CIV clearance and issuance of certification. Item C, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of first-class permit. Item D, transfer of professional personnel. And item, oh, item E, employment of extracurricular personnel. And we have two, two changes to make here. Number six, under, under party Jeremy Scholl. That should say Hamlin, PKA, not Guy Valley Middle School. And number seven, Lucas Ashworth. Should also indicate Hamlin, PKA, and not Guy Valley Middle School. So if you make those two corrections, I appreciate it tonight. And then item F, resignations and retirements.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of those personnel items? Comments? Okay, that being said, with the two corrections that Mr. Minkett pointed out on employment of extra credit, personnel number six and number seven should be Hamlin, PKA, as in Guy Valley. Is that an all yes vote on the personnel?
Yes.
Okay, all yes on personnel items. That brings us down to comments for the conference. Let's first do comments from board members. Anybody have anything?
One little quick thing. We're supposed to have apparently a paving around some of the schools. Will contracts be lit for that immediately after the beginning of new fiscal year?
We have it ready to go for the next agenda. So it'll be from July 1st is what it is.
It'll be finished by the time.
It'll be, yeah, by the time school begins.
Okay.
Anything else? And Ms. Brooks and we signed the papers for the lights at Midway earlier today. You got papers in, didn't you?
Yeah, thank goodness.
Yeah, so we've taken another step.
Yeah, the, the moves will go directly to the commissioner of Department of Highways for signing. And they'll be returning that essentially. We'll get to that.
Mr. Minkett not signing, so I'll be back in their court again. They're coming, Larry. It's a step away.
So excited. Yeah.
I may drive over there in the fog just to see him sometime. Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything else? Board members? Um, Mr. Minkett going to be yours now?
Well, I have a few, let me, let me cover a couple.
Let's just go to your general comments now.
As you know, graduation is ago. It's next Friday night at 7:30, Alliance Club Field. We do have a rain day and that would be the very next day that morning, if that's okay with the board. January, June 27th, 10:00 a.m.
Next day, okay.
It would be the next morning if we were people would be rained out. We are working with the local health department to make sure this is a safe event for students, staff, and family. There is a graduation committee meeting tomorrow to cut iron out some of the details of one of big, which is would be how many guests each one of the graduates will be able to invite to the ceremony. So I should have more information for you tomorrow and I'll send that to you in an email so that you'll know what we're doing. So we're excited about being able to hold graduation. You know, we didn't know for the longest time, like, March 12th.
Jeff, do you know, as far as, are, will tomorrow be the day when you find out more about the logistics?
Yes. I'll send you an email. Right now I don't know all the logistics of what, how that's going to work. But I do know we have 175 graduates and I believe roughly 145. 145 somewhere in the neighborhood said that they would participate. Uh, we didn't hear from all the graduates, so, I mean, that's ballpark.
But I mean, are there certain, um, requirements in order to do this from the governor's office? Such as social distancing, those kind of things?
I give you the guidelines.
Yeah, I'm sitting there.
Okay, yeah, I, I give you the guidelines. I, I, you've probably seen this.
Yeah.
So that I'm down there at the graduation, that's.
Right. And we'll have hand sanitizing stations. I talked to, to Mr. Gosney, and we have portable stations on stands that we'll have over at the ball field. Um.
Okay, so this, uh, states a lot of the difference. And it must be done right. Okay.
So it's, it'll, it's going to be a lot of work to get everything in place, but we've got several people here who jump in there and, uh, make sure it happens for students.
Okay.
So, yeah. So I don't know if you've heard this or not. Today, we, we officially have canceled prom. Prom's not going to happen. We held off for, for the longest time, as you know, but, uh, it's just not going to be able to take place this year.
Yeah, I came across social media earlier today.
I saw it. It's on there.
Why don't you, uh, catch you, I don't know. The, uh, school, let me jump, let me jump to this. Uh, we've talked about the re-entry plan for athletics. There's also now a plan for the return of high school marching bands. And I've given you a copy of this document as well. Over on, um, on page four is where it really gets into the nuts and bolts of what this would look like. And it's, and it's set up similarly to how, what we're doing with athletics in terms of phases. There's, you've got phase one, phase two, and phase three. What I did not see in here was dates. Um, and I, I'm just going to, I'm going to ask you, because I know the principals were supposed to get some information about, you know, the, the timelines.
I did not.
Okay. Um, this would require your approval or not for our band to be able to participate under these guidelines. But as you can see in phase one, you know, you get all the screening requirements, um, that we would have with our athletes. Uh, you also have the limitations on how many students that you could have at one time. And in that, in phase one, no more than 10 people at a time. And it does say inside or outside, but then I, I'd look down here under the one, two, three, four, five, six bullet, and it says rehearsals may take place only outdoors. So I would assume that, you know, the plan would to be outside as much as possible and not have students inside the building. Phase two, you could have up to as many as 50 individuals at a time outside, but they, again, have to be in groups of 10. And those 10 students would have to make it, there's no intermediate, uh, groups.
When do you go to phase two?
Don't know.
That's what we don't, I was going to ask you, if you can get a warning, because I haven't seen any, any dates in terms of when this would happen.
We don't know when phase one would begin either.
No. I don't worry how long phase one would last and how long phase two would last. With, with, you know, if our athletes, two weeks for each one of those phases. We'll just have to wait for further guidance. And in phase three, at that point, you'd be able to have up to 50 individuals indoors or outdoors. Of course, it goes into the, the need for, you know, rigorous cleaning of facilities. Uh, we can do this and have students inside the building. I've spoken to the administration for high school, and I've asked them to contact Mr. and Mrs. Cook, our band director, and ask them that this is something that they're even interested in, um, doing. They may not have an interest at this point. Typically, the band doesn't get started until it first develops. That's when they begin, and that, and that starts with band.
I, I have one question about this. If you look at the distance requirements, in some places, it says six feet. In others, it says during rehearsals, students should be spaced a minimum of three-step intervals, 22.5 inches per step. That's not six feet. So are, are we going to, I, I mean, doesn't the law as it stands right now require six feet, social distancing?
You're right.
So how can we adopt this if it's less than six feet?
We're going to, it might be 22.6.
I, I mean, I, I just wonder, is, is someone inconsistent, and I'm not sure if we could adopt this without changing that to six feet?
I, I'm, I'm of the opinion, I think the first step is to get ahold of our band directors.
Yeah.
And see if this is something they would like to pursue. And if so, I believe we would need a plan for Mr. and Mrs. Cook in terms of what this would look like to ensure, you know, that we're meeting these guidelines and that we're being safe with our students. But I just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, because this was just shared with superintendents, um, last week. And in that message that we received, said that principals would receive, would be receiving, uh, additional guidance beyond what you see here at CED. So, um, I know the administrators at the high school, when I spoke to them this morning, they had seen the guidance, but they haven't seen anything else beyond what you're looking at right now.
I mean, you're talking four and a half inches difference, over six feet. No one's ever going to know that, but I just don't want us to look stupid. We adopt something that's contrary to the law. So I agree with you though, that they're even interested.
If you've got a long stride versus a short.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it is a local decision. It'd be up to the board whether.
Now, is this something that we have to, is that like a vote thing or a nod?
Just a nod. It's not even.
We don't have to nod tonight, because we want to make sure, or someone's going to make sure and see if they have any input before we have to nod or name.
We'll have later on. Okay.
Okay. Um, okay. The school building authority sent us new timelines, uh, sent superintendent's new timelines last week. We were anticipating that this would happen. Um, and I've given you, I provided you a copy of these timelines as well this evening. And our, the first one is, on the first page, our MIP project. And just, just to recap, what we're looking at doing there is a chiller, a new chiller for West Hamlet Elementary, as well as ATAC controls, upgrades. I don't, off the top of my head, recall what the, what the cost of that project was going to be. And I didn't have a chance to talk to Mr. Gosney today. But that is our plan, and, and we were working on that application, uh, to have it ready for April 1st, which was the original deadline. We now have it till July 10th to submit that application. The CEFP schedule has changed, and that's on page two. And most, most of these, um, phases, you know, we were, we were hitting those, and we're to the point of holding our community meetings when those came to a halt because of the, uh, COVID situation. So those deadlines, you can, you can look at those, and you can see that most of them have been moved forward. Some of them a month, some of them two months, um, some of, some of them, as many as four months, um, out from what was originally scheduled. Uh, I have yet to hear back from, uh, from Mr. Ferguson regarding his advertisement in the journal. Uh, I've left him a voicemail, a text message, uh, to get off your back from, and I'll continue to try to, uh, to run him down. Because, because you recall our last conversation, which we had discussed, we were going, those last week, community meetings, placing advertisement in the paper and asking for feedback. So, and again, I just wanted you to know that those deadlines have all been pushed forward. So there's not a sense of urgency. I'll follow up with you. I've got a stack.
Give him David.
Thanks.
Yeah, wait, can I get your name on? Okay. Um, and that's all I have.
Okay. All right. Ms. McKit's comments for conclusion. For now, Mr. McKit has something else. Okay. Uh, board members have had the opportunity, so we'll go with the mayor. All right. So at this point, we, uh, Ms. McKit requested a legal update. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So of course, this should be an executive session, so what's the pleasure of the board? Have a motion for an executive session for legal updates?
Sure.
Ms. Wilkerson? Mr. Baker seconded that at 6:40 PM.
Pertaining to personnel?
Personnel, yes.
Thank you.